Okay, it is 5:32. I call this meeting of the Hope Public School Board to order. You have in front of you, the first item on our agenda is our reports. And you have our minutes in front of you from the April 17th and the April 20th meeting. We will entertain a motion regarding those minutes at this time.
That we accept the minutes for April 17th and 20th?
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Moss, a second by Mr. Hamilton. All of those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is our expenditures. You have in front of you the expenditures for the month. We will entertain a motion regarding these at this time.
I move that we accept expenditures, that's pretty good.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hamilton, a second by Ms. Moss. All of those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. The next thing we have is our superintendent's report, Dr. Crossley.
All right, Javier Ledesma, Javier Ledesma. Javier has made amazing academic gains. He begins each day with a smile and is a friend to anyone he meets. Javier Ledesma. Clap it up for Javier, even if he's not here. Recognize him in his absence. All right, Rhonda Rankins, Rhonda Rankins. Seeking resources and strategies to continue learning at home. Ms. Rankin supports her child, teachers, and all of their endeavors. Rhonda Rankins. Jonathan Brad, oh, there you are. How are you doing today? Good, I am. I'm gonna pass this to you. Do you mind getting a little picture with us?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, here you go, ready? One, two, three. There you go.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. All right, next, we got Jonathan Bradford. Jonathan Bradford, always willing to assist when needed. He promotes the love of music to students through hands-on experience with instruments. Jonathan Bradford. As soon as you hear your name, just come on down. Thank you, that's a great name, a great name to give.
Ready, one, two, three.
All right, Marcy Gully. Ms. Gully, now I've got firsthand experience with Ms. Gully. She is fantastic. She engages students in relevant learning experiences. She continues to hone her skills through professional development and advancing her educational career. Ms. Gully, thank you so much. Yes, ma'am, appreciate it.
One, two, three. You guys are like, whoa.
I'm sorry.
He can share it with you. Thank you. Clap it up again for Ms. Gully. So I sub-taught in Ms. Smith's class, and Ms. Gully was peer professional assisting. She made that class run, so make no mistake, you are doing an amazing job. Riley Bramlett and Julia Bobo. There we go. They're represented HAPS at the Magnet Fair, sharing their HAPS stories and celebrating all that students can experience at HAPS, and also inside the East Program. So outside today, they did an amazing job presenting, guys. Thank you, thank you. There's two coins in here, just come on, slide over here. I'm gonna present this to y'all. And just smile through the camera.
Ready? Here, three. That'll work.
All right. Thank you. All right, next, next up, they're over here. All right, we have Chastity Glenn. Chastity Glenn, there we go. Chastity Glenn, supporting teachers, always willing to lend a hand and sharing her expertise with all of the staff members. Chastity Glenn. That's the most, huh? Yeah, right.
Three.
He can share it with you, he'll share it with you. Thank you. Clap it up for Ms. Glenn. All right. Ladera Hill, Ladera Hill. Didn't think I saw her. Ladera Hill, instilling a love of math in all fifth and sixth graders while teaching rigorous and relevant content. Ms. Ladera Hill, the Rotary, one of the Rotary Teachers of the Year. Clap it up for Ladera Hill. Renee Arnold and Robert Como. Renee Arnold and Robert Como, the, the best. The best. Custodians in the district. They take care of every little and big thing all day long, every day. Renee Arnold and Robert Como. Clap it up. I'll take a good sound check you've got coming up down here.
Thank you so much.
I'll hand this to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, everything you do.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear it. Clap it up for Mr. Como. Main Street Cleaners, Main Street Cleaners. Supporting our schools with donations of dry cleaning. Main Street Cleaners. Clap it up for Main Street Cleaners. They also put buttons back on shirts if a superintendent has one that falls off, so that's a pretty good job. All right, next, we have Ariana Flowers. Ariana Flowers, there you are. She is a polite student and a very hard worker. She helps students and teachers alike. She's amazing to be around. Ariana Flowers. Thank you so much. Would you mind taking a picture with me? I'm gonna hand this to you right here.
One, two, three.
Thank you so much. I clap it up for Ms. Flowers. Ashley Smith, Ashley Smith. Very supportive and encouraging, not only to her child, but to the whole entire BHE as well. Ashley Smith. Clap it up for Ashley. Uh-oh. Kristy Robbins, come on down. Assists students to achieve high levels in ELA. And in case you missed it, she was recognized as a high impact teacher in the entire state of Arkansas. So there was folks from the State Department came down last week, surprised, visited her and her class. Just a really great honor. Her name is now known on the state level as impacting student achievement. Kristy Robbins, everybody. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. I'm gonna hand this to you.
One, two, three.
Thank you, Kristy Robbins. Nancy Toladano, Nancy Toladano, I didn't see her, okay? Always willing to pitch in and help. She has a smile on her face when everyone around, that makes everyone around her happy. Ms. Nancy Toladano. Bank of Tom Bean. Bank of Tom, do we have a representative here from Bank of Tom Bean? Thank you for supporting Barrow Henry and our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. I think that should be called out. The Bank of Tom Bean, clap it up for them. Kayden's Bank, Kim Hollis, I saw that front row face there. Thank you for supporting BHE and our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you, Ms. Hollis, appreciate it. And Kayden's Bank.
One, two, three.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Bank OZK, Bank OZK, do we have any representatives from Bank OZK? Thank you for supporting Barrow Henry, our teachers, for everything that you do. Bank OZK. Clap it up for another bank. Okay, yeah, they are definitely here. Experience Counseling Clinic. Come on down, Experience Counseling. Experience provides essential social, emotional learning services to students and to teachers. They volunteer many hours toward our school culture. Experience Counseling Clinic. Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna feel sad here. Sure. I'll hand this to you. All right.
One, two, three.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate it. Andrew Williams Jr., Andrew Williams Jr. Andrew is a model student and athlete at Yerger Middle School. He is supportive of all initiatives and works tirelessly to keep his grades up. Andrew Williams Jr. And receiving on his behalf is Nurse Beavers. She does an amazing job with us. She was added another, last year again, Nurse, thank you for all that you do. And receiving on behalf of Andrew Williams Jr. Thank you, ma'am.
I guess I could take my mask off.
That's up to you, that's up to you. Thank you, I appreciate it, yes, ma'am. Yep. Yep. So Dad is also getting recognized, senior, Andrew Williams Senior has been recognized as well. So Mr. Williams is a very involved parent who is fully devoted to the education of his son. He sets the bar for true parental involvement. Andrew Williams Senior. All right, we want to clap it up for Andrew Williams Senior. Thank you again, all right. Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it, all right. Next, we have Sandra Roan. Sandra Roan, I did not see her earlier, but fantastic employee here. Ms. Roan has been instrumental all year in assisting and supporting all data-driven decisions at Yerger Middle School. And she's also the building test coordinator, and this is a very fun time of year if you're a building test coordinator. So Sandra Roan, instructional facilitator, clap it up for her. Linda Clark, I'm gonna brag on Linda Clark, I saw her today as well. Dr. Clark continues to be proactive in supporting all students and campuses in emotional health and school attendance. I've never seen an employee with a truer heart for students and for her community. Dr. Linda Clark. All right, Representative Danny Watson. Representative Danny Watson has been very supportive over the years. Within the last month, he's been present at multiple events, supporting our school and the entire district. This is Yerger Middle School's acknowledgement of Representative Danny Watson. Avery Singleton, Avery Singleton. That's rare. Exemplified hard work and determination throughout high school. Avery will be graduating a year early, graduating a year early. Okay, here you go. As a result of the efforts with the Class of 2023. Best of luck to all you do, Avery Singleton. Thank you so much, yes, ma'am. Take a picture right here. I'll hand this to you.
Thank you.
I'll do one more right here, I think, is it okay? Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. All right, clap it up again. Kedra Coleman, Kedra Coleman. All right, Mrs. Coleman has always been supportive of the HUB program. She made a point to keep in touch with a teacher regarding assignments and required dates for students to ensure the success of her child. Ms. Kedra Coleman, clap it up for Ms. Coleman. Julia Beavers, come on down one more time. Did you know you were getting recognized again? Nurse Beavers, when she works this campus, CATS, is seen each morning coming up the sidewalk to make sure all of the students are taken care of. During the day, as needed, our students are served by Ms. Beavers for many bumps and bruises that may occur. Thanks for all that you do, Nurse Julia Beavers, District Nurse. Thank you. Yet again, yes, ma'am.
All right, that's okay.
I think you got the worst of that, didn't you? Again, great, clap it up for Nurse Beavers, this is amazing, amazing. All right, now, okay, you're getting two in one day now, okay? Experience Counseling, yet again, another, another campus is shouting you out. Supportive school-based counseling service, working with CATS students and the teachers to help students be more successful academically, emotionally, and socially. In addition, we, the CATS family, applaud them for recognizing our staff for teacher appreciation. Again, yet again, Experience Counseling. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna pass this to you. I know, I know. Thank you, ladies, appreciate it. All right. Sergio Martinez and Irvin Castellon, Castellon. Sergio and Irvin are senior soccer players on this year's team. They only lost one regular season game. They finished second in the district and qualified for the state playoffs and lost a close one at the end. These two young men have been instrumental in the success of the team this year and have set a great foundation for the future. Sergio and Irvin, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I'm gonna hand this to you guys. Let's get a picture right here. Slide this way. All right, thanks, guys. Clap it up again, clap it up again. Kelly Muldrew, Kelly Muldrew. Coach Kelly is a parent who supports guys and pushes her son to strive to perform with excellence in all that he does. If you know Coach Kelly, you are aware that she pushes all students she encounters to be their very best. Ms. Kelly Muldrew, clap it up for her. Delma Stewart, Delma Stewart. This is the time of year where the rubber meets the road. Ms. Stewart is doing a marvelous job of overseeing the final tally, and I can attest to this, the final tally on senior students completing all requirements before graduation. Ms. Delma Stewart, counselor. Thank you, ma'am. I know it's a crazy time of year.
You can't wait for Friday, can you?
Clap it up for Ms. Stewart. Tim Boyd, is Mr. Boyd here? I didn't see him. I cannot express enough how appreciative the entire high school staff is about Mr. Tim and the job that he does for our students, staff, and for our campus. If things are broken and need to be repaired, he can fix them. If they're torn up and you can't think that it can be repaired, he can fix it. Mr. Tim Boyd, clap it up. Tanya Alvarado, Tanya Alvarado. Okay, Ms. Alvarado is a very special parent in our school community. Ms. Alvarado shows great dedication to the students and the school and will answer the call of services of anyone in our students with Diamond State Bank. We appreciate all that they do for our students. Diamond State Bank and Tanya Alvarado. Clap it up for them. Count the last bit? All right. Daniel Bazabal, Bazabal. Okay, he has improved tremendously this year. He hops right out of the car with no crying. For a minute, I thought it was a high school student, I was like, Lord have mercy. Pre-K student, no crying and fits, and hugs each person that they meet on the way to the classroom. Dania Bazabal. And if I get that wrong, I'm so sorry. Clap it up for Dania. The mental image is different if they're 17 or, yeah, you know, it's just different. Or, exactly. Jessica Bernson, Jessica Bernson. Brought a rabbit and puppies this year to share with our students. She is always willing to help out and volunteer with our kids. Jessica Bernson, clap it up for Jessica. Ashley Roden at Hope High School with the Hope FFA. They gave our students free rodeo tickets, which they loved. They also came and helped out with our petting zoo for Arkansas Children's Week. Ashley Roden, clap it up. Mr. Lindsey Craven, Mr. Craven. He is helpful to staff and a wonderful example to our students. He is there every day and has never once complained about working in our hall. He is always positive and upbeat and adds joy to each person and child that he encounters. Mr. Craven, clap it up. All right, and last one. Hempstead County Farm Bureau Women's Committee. Hempstead County, Hempstead County? I'm just kidding. They help all 120 students plant sunflowers at our Arkansas Children's Week event. They also brought in farm animals for our petting zoo. Hempstead County Farm Bureau Women's Committee, clap it up. All right, is anyone here expecting to receive an award but not? Okay? That happens every once in a while, okay? Again, before we go back to regular business as usual, I just want to say again, it's the last one of the year. Thank you so much for who you are, what you add to our system, and where we're going together. It takes all of us getting this done together. Tell your friends, tell everybody, it's gonna be a great school year next year. August the 14th is the first day of school. Come prepared, smiles on your faces, adults and kids, whether it's hopping out of the car, hugging all the staff members on the way in, going to a petting zoo, or just our teaching third grade. We want you to be involved with what we do. Thank you, everyone. If I haven't told you lately, we love you, so thank you. Stick around, we have a regularly scheduled board meeting, it shouldn't last too long.
Okay, we are back to our agenda. And we are now at aspiring leaders stipend approval, Dr. Crossley.
So this is something that you guys already approved in the plan. However, this is that time of year where we're paying stipends out, so we just wanted to make sure that you guys had a chance to know that. A thousand per semester for the aspiring leaders group. If you'll open up your plan there. Actually, it's for each completed year. So if you go down to added incentives, the last two sentences, each fellow will receive a $1,000 stipend for each completed year in the program. If a fellow fails to complete the year, they will not receive the $1,000 stipend or a prorated amount. So right now, we have five members in that group. It is a two-year cohort process, so each member will receive $1,000. Again, this plan and everything about it was already approved. It's just getting to be that time where we actually wanted to have it approve, an approval in the minutes before we pay it out. So it's been a very interesting year with our aspiring leaders, they've learned a whole lot. Newly cemented Dr. Portia Jones, she just received her doctorate. Dr. Portia Jones has assisted these five fellows this year. It's been a great process for them, and they're applying for jobs left and right and thinking about themselves in this district as leaders. And this is just to put it official through a vote, so we can have that for auditing purposes. So again, you've already approved the plan, this is just for auditing purposes, the $1,000 per year for those aspiring leaders.
Okay, we will entertain a motion at this time.
President, I move that we approve the aspiring leaders, leaders fellowship program incentive of $1,000 stipend each year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Courtney, a second by Ms. Dickinson. All of those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. Motion carries. The next thing we have on our new business is school choice.
Two separate ones, they are electing to come into the school district. One for the Collegiate Academy, they've already received the required scores to do so. They're coming from another adjacent district. And the first one is choicing in with the idea of going to one of our middle school options. So if you would like to, you could take them both separately or together. It would just be an approval of the school choice student applications.
We will entertain a motion at this time.
Madam, go ahead, sir.
Madam President, I move that we accept both school choice applications.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hamilton, a second by Mr. Courtney. All of those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. Motion carries. All right, the next thing we have is volunteer coaching.
All right, so we have two items on the agenda today that are more conversational or just FYIs, if you will. So I know previously, there were some years ago, there was a volunteer coaching policy or a volunteer coaching practice that we employed. I've spoken with Coach Turner, who's our athletic director, just about this in general. This is a tool that we want to have in our toolkit in the future. We think that maybe it is. Maybe in the future, if there's a sport that doesn't have a coach, there could be a volunteer coach who's able to fill those requirements in the future if agreed upon with the principal and the athletic director. And for example, if they're an assistant coach with the head coach of that team as well. So there'd have to be an approval process to make sure that happens. I don't have something to present to you today to say, hey, let's make this a policy. It's really conversational and FYI, and we can have some discussion about it if you'd like to. Just to know if you guys want me to bring something to you next month for an action item on a version of a volunteer coaching policy or a volunteer coaching practice that you guys would be aware of. So this is, for the last year, I would say, when we're looking for coaches and trying to find coaches to hire, this time of year especially, it starts to become a conversation. So I just want to go ahead and bring it to your attention. That's not. Right, and. Yes, ma'am, and that's a, that's a good point. So I think part of the thought going forward would be, there would be multiple checks and balances with the AD, and if it's an assistant coach, the head coach, even the principal of the school or the level to make sure that that sort of thing doesn't happen. And if they don't participate in a way that is beneficial to the school district or the team, then they can be relieved of their duties. So that, that would be a part, if we were to bring a policy to, to you, that would definitely be a part of that policy.
Dr. Crossley, I would love to see you bring something to us at the next board meeting.
Again, this is just discussion, we can talk about it as long as you'd like to, but if you all are in favor of that, I will work to do that, and we can talk about it next month.
Any other comments, questions? All right, moving on, we have the SPED budget.
All right, so this is required every year. There's a new component of the SPED budget this year, which is almost like a four-to-five question narrative that I worked on with our SPED Director slash Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Jocelyn Wiley. You'll see it there. This is for expenditures for next year. We just have to submit this before June 1. So there's a place there, obviously, for the signature of the superintendent and signature of the board president. There are, this is a non-discrimination, I mean, you just name it. It's basically an assurances list and a budget. And then the last little bit is the narrative piece that should be in there as well. So again, this is something we do every year, and we want to present that to you for approval before the June 1st deadline.
Any questions? If no questions, we will entertain a motion.
Just voluntarily, I'd like to mention, on the bottom of the, question number four, on the notice to all applicants, the equity for students, educators, and other program beneficiaries. This is something that we want to continue to work on intentionally in all of our programs, hence the Magnet Programs and everything that we're doing in the district. Question four, I think, does a decent job of discussing that we're gonna have all of our central office people discussing this at a high level, the Equity Coordinator, Assistant Superintendents. With the Universal Design for Learning, which we leaned into this past year, was really great for our teacher leaders, our instructional facilitators, principals. We'll continue that with another cohort of employees next year with the idea of having more inclusive practices. And I'll be the first one to tell you that we're not a perfect school district, but we want to get it right. And so this is part of that process.
Can you turn your mic on?
Oh, the disproportionality. So we have the number here is we are four times more likely to have African-American male students in special ed, which is, which is high, but not as high as it used to be. And so, and I know that, that's, the disproportionality is something that we have had as a district and other districts have had too. Because of the three-year trend in this last year's number, we, we are not receiving disproportionality-specific funds because we've done a better job of not having it be disproportionate like that. But we still have work to do, right? So the idea of having a disproportionate number of African-American males in special education is something we are monitoring closely. And I know special education, if you're watching this, a teacher or, or an administrator or anybody, you know, just in the district, can be a troublesome thing to talk about because there are regulations and rules that are required from the federal government that we, as a school district, have to uphold. All children deserve a high-quality education and, and, you know, a great environment to do so. And so leaning forward, we're leaning toward more inclusive practices, which means essentially keeping students in the classroom and having supports in the classroom because what we have found, and it's not just us, other places have found this as well. When we take kids out of that classroom setting where a whole group instruction is taking place and they go to a pull-out room or whatever, there is a place for that, but then many times, they fail to receive the grade-level content that they'll need not just for state testing, but just for life in general to stay on grade level, to have access to that. So, and, you know, this is something we are very mindful of, and we are working. just say, oh, you know, this is gonna take me too long to do, or, or just move on in the lesson, which happens all too often, and we want to guard against that. That's exactly right. So you, you mentioned Ms. Wiley by name. She is the assistant superintendent slash SPED director that I'm referring to, and she's been working hands-on with the UDL program as well as, you know, our curriculum team and facilitators and principals.
Any other questions? If no questions, we will entertain a motion regarding the SPED budget. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Johnson, a second by Mr. Courtney. All of those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. The next thing we have is our certified personnel policy proposal.
So again, this is one of those items that are, is also FYI or informational only this month. Next month, we may have a member of the PPC come before us, or, or I'll do it, however we work that out to present on their behalf, but there are four policy changes or policy proposals there. I've had a chance to look at some of them as have my district staff. There's, there's a couple of them that propose, that potentially could cause some auditing issues whenever we get audited year to year, so I might not be able to, to co-sign some of those policies, but there are certain adjustments or amendments to some of those policies that I think are definitely worthwhile. But again, this was kind of an FYI for you to just have access to for this month, take a look at it, and then come back next month, just like the previous item that we mentioned, and have a, a member of the personnel policy committee present however they feel they need to next month. So just, just an FYI. Any questions or thoughts on that?
Okay, moving on, we have our facilities rental requests.
Just one, just one rental, rental request. This is for, for AAU rental, and this is one that was vetted previously, I mean, years, I think it's kind of something that happens year to year. I know last year was my first year working with this facility. Request is something that I think really benefits our students. Our students participate in this. As you may very well see, on the middle section, all organizations using the facilities must have a school sponsor, a full-time contracted employee, and you'll see sponsored names there literally are our basketball coaches. So they, they seem to be on board with this. Coach Turner, Coach Phillip Turner approved this. The high school principal approved this. The facility director approved this. And again, that's part of our facility change. So by the time it gets to me, there's no longer this guesswork where I have to hunt down different people, like, I, I know everyone has approved this, and so I'm coming before you in full faith that this should be good and vetted through our system.
Any questions? If no questions, we will entertain a motion regarding the facilities rental request.
I move that we accept the facilities rental request coming from the coaches.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Moss, a second by Ms. Johnson. All of those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. The next item we have on our agenda is our personnel packet.
All right, so this one, there's nothing extensive on this one. Again, I appreciate you guys being willing to meet next week for a special session. I think there may be a few more names on that one as folks are currently in the process of interviewing and vetting candidates. We just have a few here. You can see the names in the packet. I present these to you for approval. Obviously, if you would like to go to executive session, we definitely can, or if not.
Okay, we can either entertain a motion to go into executive session, or we can entertain a motion regarding the personnel packet.
President, I move that we accept the personnel packet as ready.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hamilton, a second by Mr. Courtney. All of those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimously. There's nothing more before the board. We stand adjourned.